All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Newbury Zoning Board of Appeals. Today is Thursday, September 15th, 2022 at 7:30 PM. And we have with us tonight, we have Chrissy Lopri, who is our administrative assistant. We have Martha Taylor, who is our town planner. We have Michelle Wheeler, who is a sitting member tonight. Mario Caravalli, who is a member, and myself, Eric San, who is the chair. So with that, let's open the meeting and start it at the first hearing.
All right, so Meredith Allen Massaro, 16 Dartmouth Way. The applicant is requesting a special permit for relief of section 97-4D 5C 01. Increase in footprint and 97-4D 5C 02. Upward extension of the Newbury zoning bylaws and any other permanent relief as may be required under the Town of Newbury zoning bylaws to allow the proposed use project. The applicant proposes to raise this existing nonconforming single-family dwelling, nonconforming right-side setback, and to construct a new, more conforming single-family dwelling on pilings with an increase in footprint and height on the lot. Right-side setback to be increased will be less nonconforming. Located at 6 Dartmouth Way, Plum Island, Newbury. Assessor Smith, U 02, Lot 81.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Douglas Duchesne from Finnernan Nicholson, representing the applicant this evening. I'd also like to introduce Attorney Colleen Hayes from my office, who's going to be working with me on the presentations tonight. I'm here this evening representing Meredith Massaro, who is here with us this evening in the back, the owner of the property. And also with us on this project is Scott Brown from Scott &amp; Brown Architects, who is the architect on the problem. Scott is here with us as well. Just to give you a quick summary, I provided you just a copy of my presentation in case you want to follow. The Massaros are seeking to raise the pre-existing nonconforming home on the pre-existing nonconforming lot at 16 Dartmouth Way. And what they would like to do is to construct a new, single-family home on the lot, adding one bedroom. They are currently at a two bedrooms, they have two bedrooms, and as you know, the bylaw does allow us to add one, to get to three, and they would like to do that. Because we are increasing the height and the footprint of the structure, we require a finding from this board, which is why we were here this evening. With respect to the existing conditions, as I said, the lot is pre-existing nonconforming. It's 5,688 square feet, where as you know, 40,000 square feet is required. Frontage is at 58.63 feet, where 125 is required. However, we're not proposing any changes to the lot, not making it bigger or smaller, staying the same. With respect to the structures on the property, and there's just one, it too is pre-existing nonconforming. The home itself, the existing home, is nonconforming as to the right side setback. It is currently 4.3 feet from the side yard, where as you will recall, 10 feet is required. However, we are proposing to reduce that nonconformity by nearly doubling the space, the setback, from the existing 4.3 to 8.5 feet. So we did everything we could, tried and get that side yard into conformity, but it will remain the only nonconforming aspect of the project, although we're making it better. With respect to the proposed structure, as I said, we are completely raising the existing structure and building a completely new home, and we are going to construct it as a single-family home, because it's a single-family now, and as I said, we're adding one bedroom. The new structure will reduce that pre-existing nonconforming dimensional right-side setback by pushing it out to eight and a half feet. With respect to all other dimensional regulations, we are conforming. So we are not creating any new nonconformities, we're not exasperating any nonconformities, and we are reducing that one existing nonconformity. The new structure will meet lot coverage, FAR, and height requirements. Also, the new structure will be built on pilings, so that we are in performance with all flood regulations, which I know is one of the goals in the PIOD. With respect to our justification for the special permit, as you know, or I would like to present that the reconstruction of that existing dwelling will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or to the PIOD. First of all, the benefits that this project will bring to the table are that, one, as I've said a number of times, I apologize, we are reducing the one pre-existing nonconforming dimensional setback. We are going to certainly improve the aesthetics of the property by building a new home, and you've got a chance to see the drawings in just a minute, and I hope you'll agree that it's a significant improvement over the existing structure. And I will at least put these up, so you can take a look at the existing structure, which is here. This is the structure with the neighbor to the right, and this is the same structure with the neighbor to the left. I'm sorry, I didn't get a straight-on picture of the house. And then this is looking off the back of the house, so you can see what the general neighborhood looks like directly behind us, is a home looks to have been built about the same time, perhaps, as this structure. And then off to the right, there's a fairly new, significantly sized building to the right, and to the back left, you'll see there's a myriad of new homes that have been built, including one that has a pretty significant roof deck. But it gives you a general feel for how the property sits. So we are certainly going to improve the aesthetics of the property, which will help to improve the value of the property and the surrounding homes. That will result in increased tax revenues for the town. The proposed structure will not impact anyone's views or impact or cause any shadowing to the adjacent structures. It is not going to be, it's going to be right in line with most of the structures around in terms of the final height. So that the alteration we're proposing, the design of the house, as well as the increase in the height, is very consistent with what we see surrounding the structure, and as we all know, the PIOD in general. And again, we're meeting all flood regulations, which is a dramatic safety improvement for the neighborhood. And as I said, it is one of the goals under the PIOD, and so we're certainly making that as a benefit, not a substantial detriment. Now, my clients have also reached out to their neighbors, presented them a copy of what they were doing, and made an offer to meet with them, discuss it, and talk about it, and they did in fact do that. And what I've presented to you is a separate little package that has a cover like this. Essentially just showed you the locus, and the checkbox represent the abutting neighbors with whom my clients have spoken and who have provided a letter of support or have signed a petition of support. But in any event, as you can see, we have done the work to meet with all of our abutting neighbors, and without exception, the abutting neighbors are supportive of the project. The next page on my presentation is just, I just wanted to give you a highlight of the zoning matrix, so that you can see our height. We're currently at 20 feet, we're proposing to go to 26.5, not a dramatic increase, and certainly well below the 35-foot limitation. Our lot coverage is going up a little, but we are still within the 20%. Front setback is conforming, the side setback, as we've discussed, is being improved, the side B setback is conforming, rear setback is conforming, and the FAR of the new structure will also conform. So in sort of sum, we are meeting, to the extent possible, all of your dimensional regulations, height, FAR, lot coverage, and have made an improvement in the one nonconforming side yard setback, and perhaps maybe that's why the neighbor to that side is in support, because we are pushing away and centering the house on the lot. So with that, if Scott would be kind enough to just give you a quick overview of the architecturals and...
Great. Thank you, Attorney Duchesne. Scott Brown, the architect for the project. So this is a, you know, roughly a 1,400-square-foot, three-bedroom house, as Attorney Duchesne already stated. It is a modest house on a very small lot. It is a fairly simple design, and this is largely dictated by some of the zoning constraints that we are under. It is roughly the same size in terms of square footage as in terms of compared to what is there now, but it is taller, and this is largely a result of having to put this up on piles. But nonetheless, you'll see on this first sheet, A 2.1, which is in your packet, we've got the overall height dimensions located on the left. So despite being up on piles, we are significantly under the maximum height allowed of 35 feet. It is a narrow house, it is a long house, it's a lot, and this is mainly a result of trying to sort of get the parking out of the front yard into the side yard. And the other reason for sort of the narrow and long shape is that this makes for a more efficient layout, and we're trying to, in 1,400 square feet for a family of six, we're fighting for every inch here. So this is sort of the most efficient layout. So on the sheet right here, you know, A 2.1, this is the front elevation of the house. This space right here, this is a two-story volume, and that is roughly in the same location as the existing house right here. This one-story bump out is the primary entry, that sits slightly forward of the existing house. This is the left side elevation, you can see a front entry to the right, we have a deck on the back, going full circle. This is the rear of the house, that's the deck in the back of the house that I spoke about. This is a second-floor notch, which you can also see here in the right side elevation, which is the south elevation of the house. This helps to break up the length, but again, we're carving away square footage where we don't actually need it. So south elevation, coming full circle, for an elevational house, front-to-back gable, you know, fairly simple. We're hoping for a metal roof here at some point, also hoping for a solar array on the side, south elevation as well. And, you know, in summary, I think this is immense improvement over what's there now, and I certainly hope that everybody will agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. So if I could, I'll just give you a quick conclusion here. So my clients are raising that home, proposing to build the home as Scott has described to you. We've done it in a way to meet all of the bylaws, dimensional requirements, including trying to make that right side yard less nonconforming. The new dwelling will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or the Plum Island community in general, as it's going to reduce that nonconformance while meeting all other rules and regulations, and certainly being a dramatic increase in the aesthetic value. It will certainly be a benefit for the neighborhood and by no means a significant or substantial detriment. And again, by improving those aesthetics of the home, improving the safety of the home by meeting flood regulations, increasing property values, I would suggest that there are some benefits to this project, but certainly no significant detriment. So with that, members of the board, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Excellent. If there are members have any questions or comments?
Yeah, it looks like we're missing the existing square footages, the breakdown for the rooms. So it's a little hard to sort of, you know, understand what is there compared to what is going there in terms of numbers. I mean, you see your overall numbers, but, and there weren't any existing plans with it here, floor plans?
Well, I think in light of the fact that we're proposing to, you know, just raise it, we just thought that the square footage of the existing structure would suffice for comparison.
Yeah, we did do a walkthrough and a measure-up, but we didn't do detailed existing condition plans, because we knew from day one that, you know, the house was going to be kind of down. And so that FAR, which is actually in the site plan, is my calculation based upon that walkthrough. And to the best of my knowledge, I thought we did that, that FAR calc sheet, but obviously it's not in the package.
So it would be a question of mine, only because it's missing from the application, and I think at this point, it's more of a technicality, because it does come before us, and it does come into play when we're looking at added bedrooms for some applications and for confirming height and giving people an understanding of what the actual improvement is. So we have an assessor's card, but we would like to see complete applications. I think, Michelle, in my mind, this is not detrimental in terms of what they're asking for.
No, I agree.
If the house was smaller, and it was much more of a shack, and you only had one bedroom, and you were trying to go to three, we'd have to require it, but in this case, to me, it doesn't, it's not an issue.
Yeah, this sounds like maybe you have the information already anyway, so you can just fill in the sound.
Yeah, and we're sure that we provide it to the board via records.
I think that's just filling the sound.
And I do apologize.
Do you? Mr. San?
Okay. And the only other technicality I think I could find for a very nice presentation to the board was that on the survey, the frontage isn't listed on the actual, all the other sides have a meet and bounds and a length, and the front does not. It is listed on here, but...
But, okay, so we're gonna add that.
Yep. So I don't have any more questions.
So with that, I'd like to open it up to the public, and I'd like to ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the project? Is there anybody here that would like to speak against the project? All right. So is there any other discussion on the board? Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the special term as proposed in the new construction. Structure will not be more detrimental than existing, with an increased lot coverage from 17.5 to 20, height increased 20 to 26.5, and an increase in setback from 4.3 to 8.5 right side, and that will be completed on our check list.
Okay. As an addition, for a second?
Okay.
There's a vote, all those in favor? Aye. All right, motion passed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I will give you those, that plan and the shot, just so that your record's complete. I apologize.
Great. Mr. Mike, Chrissy?
Thank you. All right, Meredith, thank you. All right, next, Kevin and Lisa Barlow of 17 10th Street. The applicants are requesting a special permit for relief of section 97-4D 5C 01, increase in footprint, and 97-4D 5C 02, upward extension of the Newbury zoning bylaws, and any other permanent relief as may be required under the Town of Newbury zoning bylaws to allow the proposed use project. The applicant proposes to raise the existing nonconforming two-family dwelling with a front yard setback, and to construct a new two-family dwelling with an increase in footprint and height on the lot. Front yard setback to be increased will be less nonconforming. Located at 17 10th Street, Plum Island, Newbury, Mass. Assessor Smith, U 02, Lot 244.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
As Attorney Duchesne stated earlier, my name is Attorney Colleen Hayes, working for Finnernan Nicholson, and I have to apologize, on the front page it says Kevin and Kim Barlow, but I don't know where that came from. Obviously, it's Kevin and Lisa, so I apologize for that. And again, Scott Brown is here on this project. So just to give you an overview, so the Barlos are seeking to raise their pre-existing nonconforming two-family home on their pre-existing nonconforming lot at numbers 17 and number 19, 10th Street. They are planning on constructing a new two-family home on the lot, resulting in the reduction of the existing nonconformities, which will provide benefits to the neighborhood. Because they're increasing the height and the footprint of the new structure, we are here seeking a special permit. So as you can see on the next page, the lot is 13,300 square feet, which is a pretty good size for that neighborhood, but in no way nearly 40,000, that's required. The home, the nonconforming front setback of 7.7, its 20-foot is required, so we're proposing to reduce the 7.7 down to 9.9. So the structure itself has two bedrooms in one unit and one bedroom in the other unit, and we're proposing to add one bedroom to the two-bedroom unit, and the one bedroom is going to stay a one bedroom. So with the new structure, again, I said we're going to reduce that front setback, we're going to give them another couple of feedback, and then otherwise, we're going to meet all of the other dimensional requirements, we're going to meet lot coverage, we're going to meet FAR, and height performance. Also, this house will be put on pilings, so we'll be compliant with the zoning requirements as well as the flood regulations. As you can see by the pictures, the house is in a little bit of rough shape, so, sorry. So building the brand-new structure will certainly be a benefit to the neighborhood. Like I said, they're going to move it a little bit further back from the street, and again, we meet all the dimensional regulations, and we are not exacerbating or creating any new nonconformities. We'll also be improving the aesthetics of the property, increasing the property value of this property and the surrounding houses. Again, increased tax revenue from the town, meeting all the flood regulations. The proposed increase in height will still be below the 35-foot requirement. And again, we also, the Barlos did talk with all of their abutting neighbors, and we do have letters of support, where the petition signed the affirmative that they were, that they agreed with the plans, and you can see on the other handout that we gave you with the map, we've contacted all of the homes around them, and they, we have not had any, any, sorry, have any concerns. We believe that they're all on board. So Scott, do you want to...
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, Colleen. Scott Brown, again, Scott Brown for the record, Scott Brown, the architect for the project. So this is not necessarily as simple as, you know, the house in the last application. So this is a very large lot, not that I've done a ton of work on Plum Island, but this is the largest lot that I've worked on. The existing house is in dire need of updating. There are places in the house where you can see the outside, and those are not windows. So dire need of updating. So this is, what we're proposing here is roughly a 3,200-square-foot house. The house, the lot is certainly large enough to accommodate it, and it's sized to accommodate kind of a large influx of family at times. There's an existing pool in the back, and on the site plan, put together by Tim Meehan, you know, I looked at this today and got a little bit of a headache, he did a nice job of putting a ton of information on it, but I felt compelled to throw some color on it, because you really sort of have to fight through all this information to actually get to the core of what we're doing. So here, the red indicates the proposed footprint, and the blue indicates the existing footprint. So here's 10th Street, so we're roughly, this is the front yard setback, so we're roughly about the same as to what's here now. This is considered left-side setback, we're getting a little closer, but we're still conforming, and rear yard setback, again, getting a little closer, but, you know, still conforming. So in terms of the design, this is the gambrel, gambrel-shaped roof style of the house, it's what I would call kind of a transitional design, where it has some traditional undertones, but some modern, modern features. The lot has a little bit, a little bit of a slope to it, this is what I would consider the front elevation, as you would view from 10th Street. The pool sits over here, and you see the slope sloping up here. We're proposing a carport off to the left side right here, and despite the slope, and again, having this house be put up on piles, we're still comfortably underneath the maximum lot height of 35 feet, and that's shown here on the left side. So it's a little bit fidgety, because we're actually calculating, I mean, we're fighting for this sort of decorative coupla on here. So I think it's going to feel a little bit smaller with these numbers on the table. So front elevation, you will note that quite a bit of drop-off right here. We've got a second-floor plate that comes all the way across here, so the second floor's all at the same level. So we have a lot of interstitial space from the apron, so to speak, here at the garage, to the underside of this second floor. So one of the things that we have, we're proposing, is we're proposing to put like a little bit of a stored space here, which is actually less than five feet tall, you know, otherwise, this is about, going to be about 14 feet. So we're trying to take advantage of that fall-off in the land to grab some stored space there. This is the left-side elevation, facing east. You can see the front entrance right here, this is where that carport slash garage is right here underneath this. This is the primary suite above the garage, lots of glass, this is sort of an inset balcony, that's that decorative coupla, and we have a bit of a very small observation deck, you know, located right here. Coming along the back of the house, backside of the house, this is the side opposite of 10th Street, not a lot happening here, because it is the back, and this is what I would call the right side of the house, and this is the side of the house, as you would see it, looking from the pool. Again, that observation deck coupla, you can see this here in the back view, and then coming full circle, front of the house here, you know, in this shape, an L-shaped configuration, and just to give you an orientation, that what I'm calling carport slash garage is located right here. So we're excited about this project, and, you know, certainly hope that everybody will see this as an improvement as to what's there now. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. So just to kind of sum up, so on the zoning matrix, you'll see, you want to turn there, the only dimensional nonconformity would be that front setback, and we are moving it further back so that we're making it less nonconforming. The property's been in the family for about the last 50, 50-plus years, so it's definitely showing signs of wear and tear, and they're hoping to bring this to life and have some space for their families and be able to have them stay over and not be all on top of each other. So again, they're going to look to raise the existing property that's there, that I think we can all agree needs to be taken down, and... think we can all agree needs to be taken down, and replace it with this beautiful home here. It's not going to be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, and I would argue that it actually benefited the neighborhood quite a bit. We're going to, again, reduce that pre-existing dimensional nonconformity. We will be meeting lot coverage, we will be meeting FAR, we'll be meeting height, and we'll also comply with the flood regulations by putting it up on pilings. So we've talked about the aesthetics, and it's consistent with the homes that are in the neighborhood. And you can see that we did provide the letters from some of the neighbors, all the ones that are abutting the property. So with that, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
Mario, ask me first. Just curious, the current configuration, how is it a two-family house?
So it's a one-bedroom that comes in on the left-hand side, and then there's the two-bedroom, so it's... So, right here is the one-bedroom, and then this right here is a two-bedroom.
Is it just off the house? I mean, is there any separation or?
Nope, it's connected to the house.
Is it connected inside the house, is that what you're asking, or is it, you mean it's physically connected to the house? How is it accessed, I guess? Is that what you're asking?
Well, there's a, there's a door here on the side that they can, that there's, there's an entrance right here, and then I'll have to defer to my clients if there's an entrance from that one-bedroom into the existing two-bedroom.
So they live at two separate units right now? Or you can walk between the two?
We go, we use it as like an extra bedroom, to be honest with you. It was originally built for my grandmother way back when.
And I guess that's kind of what I was asking, is it a two-family or just a one-family with a live-in or an in-law apartment?
No, it's a two-family.
Two-family, has two separate addresses, it's taxed as a two-family. You could, you know, to lock the door between, they'll both, they both have their own egress and access. But because this is, you know, this isn't something that's rented, it's really just to allow for family to gather, which is their primary use of the home. That way they can, you know, the kids or the grandkids can, you know, essentially have their own space, so they would like to keep it in this configuration.
So the new plan, though, isn't separated either, right? It, it looks like it all flows together, is that correct?
No, the interior is separated. Do we have the floor plans?
Yeah, they're right there on the FAR sheet. So what I was referring to is sort of the primary suite is a self-contained unit above, you know, above the garage, but like their existing house, they're, you do have the ability to sort of transition from this to that, but it does have its own stair, and it does have its own, we're also proposing, hopefully we can kind of get an elevator here as, you know, Lisa and Kevin age gently in place.
Okay, and but they share the bathroom?
No, this bathroom, primary bathroom is right here, and it's strictly for what I'm calling the primary bedroom, which is just a little suite.
Okay, but there's no separate kitchen?
So technically, this could, this could operate as a complete self-contained, contained unit.
So you'd close off where the laundry is, then?
Correct, yeah, they would go through the laundry room to get to the living house.
Yeah. But there's no separate kitchen? There's only one kitchen for the?
Correct, yeah, but we've got a small little kitchen out right here, which does not have, does not have a range.
Yeah.
So it could entirely operate as an independent unit. So, understanding what you drew, understanding the intent, what you want, but it, it, it looks on the page like it's all one big house, and the separation, I mean, it looks like you have a sliding door between the hallway and the front entry. There is no door between the mudroom and the main house, so if somebody walking in through the front door walks into the main house, somebody who's using the apartment walks into the main house, and then can get to a door to get to the hall to go up to the self-contained unit. So, it doesn't appear exactly as it, as it's being represented, and the other item of concern is that the home office den has a full bath off it, and so typically rooms like that on the island that could be a bedroom, we, we ask that there's no door put on that room. And in this case, and in the previous case of a good-sized room like that with no door, and especially in this case, you have a full bathroom. So, that is seen as another bedroom. I know there's no closet in it, but the full bath is a mechanical room. So those are things that we look for, and also just trying to figure out the number of bedrooms, and I know your intent, I'm not going to, I'm not going to hear the intent, but the intent of having that many bedrooms in, in a single structure that operates or can operate as a single dwelling or residence is, is, you know, get one too many bedrooms.
Oh, just to clarify on, on this, this den, so it's right off of the great room, so where everybody's now working from home, they wanted to have, you know, a nice place to be able to kind of get away from the rest of the people and get their work done and not have to be interfered with.
I understand that. It's got a, it's got a bathroom, so it looks like a bedroom, and the intent is not to have spaces in homes that, you know, are shown on plans that are extra bedrooms. You're getting an extra bedroom, and the fact that the apartment doesn't seem to be physically separated from the main part of the house. If you had a, if you had a mudroom that was equal to both, and then that mudroom then allowed you access to one unit and to the second unit, then it would be a two-family. And that's the way it, it is, I don't know if we have a definition that goes, that limits for, kind of is vague on the two-family residence. So I think, I mean, you, you have concern with the way the plan plays out, and it, it just seems in terms of access, the way it's...
It's like five-bedroom houses for that.
Yeah, well, that's my note, actually, I had, looks like five bedrooms. I mean, you know, this could be a bedroom without an issue right away, with a, you know, with an on-suite, too.
Well, the intention was that, you know, people would be able to work from there. You know, where they have a big extended family, it's nice for people to be able to just, you know, the kids can be out playing, and mom and dad can be in there getting some work done.
Yeah, that makes sense, but you know what, down the road, the house is sold, and now you're selling a five-bedroom house. I mean, right now, it's really a five-bedroom, single-family house.
I don't think that was the intention. I think that, I think that there's provided enough separation here to show that that is a fully functioning separate unit, and then here we have, you know, bedroom, 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 so there's our three bedrooms.
If I could, with respect to your concerns about the den potentially being converted to another bedroom, in talking with Scott, I mean, we can certainly modify the structure so it doesn't have, you know, the doorway, expectation of privacy, so we can modify the floor plan of that room to allay your fears. But I'm a little, I'm a little confused with regard to the fact that the house is currently a legal two-family, although it is being used in a similar manner as we're proposing here, in that, you know, they, there's a door between the two, and, you know, when the family's all there, they just kind of go back and forth.
Totally understand, but there's no definition or understanding or, or, or means of that, and, and true, the residence, two-family, the single structure, fixed or movable, providing complete independent living facilities for not, for not more than two families. So, are these independent? That's the question.
Yes, they can be closed off so that the one-bedroom is completely separate from the three bedrooms.
If you walk in to the mudroom, the person walking in can enter the large residence, and then could go forward, and then go into the hall and up the stairs into the second residence.
But it also has its own egress, egress. They don't have to go through the main part of the home to get to that one-bedroom.
Where's that? Where is that stair?
So there's the elevator that comes up from the carport, and then the stairs come up here into this bedroom.
Accessible means?
Into this unit.
Would be elevator, but I wouldn't call that an entry or an egress. But, you know, a simple door on the mudroom to the main part of the house allows a multi-use mudroom that then facilitates two, two separate independent living units.
I mean, we can certainly add the door.
Yeah, so that could be.
Do you want to?
Mr. Chairman, both, both our clients, as well as Mr. Brown, have indicated that they could, they're happy with that, if that's what you'd like to see.
Great, I think that, that needs the definition, it's two separate, quote, independent units, and, you know, you take off the door on the, on the drawings, then the den is open, you have a bathroom there. It's not, it's clearly, someone cannot argue that it's a bedroom or that more bedrooms were allowed, and I think we can move forward.
Okay.
And so, is there any more discussion, Michelle, or Mario? I'd like to open it up to the public, is there anybody in the room that would like to speak in favor of the project? You would state your name and address.
My name is Kevin Hud, I'm at fourteen Tenth Street, I'm in the Butter. I've been there four-eight years, I'm very much in favor of seeing that go to fruition and have it come through as, they're a great family and fully supportive of it.
Great, you say that. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
I'm Jerry Shapiro, I own sixteen eighteen Tenth Street, I am at Dorit the Butter, known in fifteen years. This certainly is something they strive for for a long time, it is well-needed, and I would like to see it happen for themselves and their family.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak against? Nobody? Okay. So with that...
Mr. Chairman, if, if you are inclined, we're happy to have a condition that we make those changes to the plans.
Okay.
So, what are the changes?
Changes would be to add a door
A door on the mudroom.
To the mudroom, to the main dwelling unit, and to take the door off the home office Also on the site plan, I see it's clear, but I'd like to state also as a condition that any built or landscape features that are over the property line will be removed, it appears that way, but just like to make sure that's the case. The pool's existing, nothing's happening with the pool? Is, is the mid-level mechanical counted in the FAR or no?
No, that's why it's less than five feet.
Are there any vents or anything that's needed for that space, and is, how is, how is it accessed off the stair by a little door or something?
Yeah, that's a good question. The intent is to come up in this little landing at the top, it is to be a little door.
Great. And how is the observa- observation deck accessed?
That would be located above here, and although we've not drawn it, the intent is to have a ship's ladder that comes from here that accesses it to the skittle.
And, and how, it's not drawn on the plan, so how big is it, per se?
Looks like about eight by eight.
Seven by seven? Okay. Observation deck, two-family live-in apartment, if we can go over that. No more questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Michelle, any questions? Is there a motion to be made?
I'll make a motion to grant a draft of the requested special permit. That includes a larger footprint from four point nine to nineteen point eight, FAR increase from fifteen point three to twenty-four, height increase from twenty feet to thirty-two feet, and an increase in front setback from seven point seven to nine point nine with special conditions, changing the, changes to include add door to the mudroom and to take the door off the office room.
So with, with that, the motion, is there a second to the motion? Okay. So, with the motion and the second, Mario's motion was to make a draft so that we could get the language right, it's every intent that this is favorable and we're approved, but we're going to, we're, we're going to take a vote that the motion is drafted with everything that we just said, and then we'll review it and approve it and sign it. So, I'm going to keep the public hearing open, just, I don't know, in case, just so you can bring more to the table, but that's, we'd like to see the draft, review the draft.
That'll give us a stop-tune date of the plan changes, too?
Great.
Right away.
Then, and, so we're making a motion to do the draft, what ability, Mark, that he will help there? If we could, if it's drafted and we review it singularly, is there a way that we didn't have to come back for a vote next month, or?
No, you need to vote in person.
We need to vote.
Yeah.
Okay, so you'll get us the plan, and unfortunately you have to come back next month, but I would think it would be fairly quick and straightforward.
Agreed with you, Jim, thank you.
Okay, so with that...
Should we also, just as we did for the last project?
Yes.
And also just fill out this again? Just so it's completely?
Sure.
Said the same thing for the last project?
Yep.
To be fair.
So you should make a motion to continue the hearing, do the timing dates or?
Can, do, can we take the vote first on the motion?
Yeah, first the motion.
And then continue the hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, so we had a motion, we had some comments on the motion, we had a second on the motion, we had some comments on the motion, we're going to vote on the motion. So all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the motion passes to, to draft that motion as we just discussed. Now we have to continue the hearing to next month's, third Thursday of the month, which is, somebody?
October twentieth.
October twenty-eighth?
Twentieth.
Twentieth, okay, so October twentieth at seven-thirty right here.
So I'll make a motion to continue
To October twentieth?
To October twentieth, to review the draft.
October twenty.
At seven-thirty.
All right, is there a second?
There's a second.
All right, all is in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there paperwork that needs to be signed on the continuance?
Thank you.
I don't know. The voter, now you guys used to...
Right, this was sort of a tool that you were going to get it on paper, because there was an issue at one time about timing or something like that, but if we took the vote and it's accurately recorded. Okay, but I think that's, that's what happened, it was, it was a little bit of that. I appreciate you have everything you need, and if you don't, Mario, is the other one to ask?
Yeah, yeah, everyone has everything, so we will do it again.
Rob's windows.
Where can anyone go?
There's no opposition, right?
Again, a little, you know, showing neighbors we talked with. Comprehensive.
Okay. All right, next one, Joey and Amy Latimer, 20 Northern Boulevard, applicant requesting special permit finding for relief of section 97, 4D5C02, upward extension of Newbury zoning bylaws, and any other permit relief that may be required in account of Newbury zoning bylaws to allow proposed use of the project. The advocates propose to modify the existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling, non-conforming front yard setback. Those modifications will result in additional non-conformity, but will result in increasing height still within conformers located at 20 Northern Boulevard, Palma and Newbury, Mass. Assessors make U02 law requirement.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, good evening. Douglas Duchesne from Finnerland and Nicholson representing Joey Latimer. With me, Colleen Hayes. Also with me this evening, John Salwa, our architect. He's here in the audience. And I think I'd like to change it up a little just so you don't have to hear the same, let's mix it up a little. So I'm going to, I'm going to go to the existing conditions first. Let me show you what we got before I give you the spiel. So this is the home at 20 Northern Boulevard. It's a, it's an accessible 100-year-old cottage. It was one of the old, you know, one of the true Palma cottage's. As you can see, here's where it sits at 20 Northern Boulevard. Sort of done is giving you a shot of the neighbors to the left. You can see this, well, you can see the homes to the left. And then this is a shot of our home. And then there's the neighbors to the, excuse me, I had that wrong. This is to the right. And these are the homes to the left. As you can see, the home sits, you know, has considerable distance between the neighbors. And as you can see from the aerial photo here, we are on the beach. And again, you can see that we've got some significant space between the neighbors. Looking across the street this way, if we look sort of at a slight angle, this is the house directly across from us. Clearly a two-story home, but for some reason, sits up on Little Knoll. It's interesting, it's a hill in bar. But in any event, so that's the house directly across. But I do want to point out, it is not directly aligned with us in the sense that it shifted over. So it has a clear view to the water. Not that we're doing anything that will impact that view, but I will tell you, you know, it looks between us within this space and it has its own view. And then of course, to the other side, that's the house directly across. And then here's the house to the corner over here. It too has its own view shed. And then we have a substantially large home to our other side across the street, which is here, and that's tall enough to see over everything. So certainly not impacting it. So we've got a good space, we're not close to our neighbors, and the good news is we're not even proposing to change the footprint. So we're not, we're not, we're just working within the footprint and the structure that's there. And so I guess with that, I'll get back onto my project summary. And that is, the Latimers are seeking a special permit to redesign, essentially redesign the interior layout of their pre-existing non-conforming home, which includes moving the bedrooms from the first, to the first floor. There are three bedrooms now, we're moving three bedrooms. We're not looking to add anything, we're just moving them. And then we're going to move the first floor, kitchen and great room, sort of a living space if you will, to the second floor. And then we are proposing, there is currently a little storage area above, and it's a pull-down and it's a, the storage space, the home has very little storage and closet area unfortunately. But we are proposing to modify that to continue to have it as a storage area, but it's also going to be the location of our utility. You know, like the A C units and things will be above in this little area that I'll show you in just a minute. Again, we're not changing the footprint of the home, we're not creating any new non-conformities, but because we are going upwards, we need a finding from the board. The lot is pre-existing non-conforming at just under 9,000 square feet. It's 88, 95.5. Frontage is at 65.39. Again, we're not proposing to change the lot in any way. The home too, is existing home, is only pre-existing non-conforming with respect to the front setback. We're supposed to be at 20 feet. The home, you know, some hundred years ago was built at 16.6. So actually pretty close, but with respect to all other dimensional, it's a conforming structure. They set it in the middle of the lot. They did a good job back a hundred years ago. So again, the only pre-existing non-conformity we're dealing with is that front setback at 16.6, and we're not proposing to touch it. As I said, we're really redesigning the inside of the home to allow it to be more usable, more user-friendly, and more conducive to the way people live and entertain today, you know, with a kitchen and a great room, and then their bedrooms on a different level for privacy. We are proposing to go from our current height of 20.5 to 28.4. So we're not, we're not anywhere near 35 feet. Quite frankly, no reason to go any higher because it would then just constitute a third floor, which we would not propose. And again, since we're really essentially redesigning the interior of the home, there'll be no changes at all to the footprint. The redesign, we feel will have no detrimental impacts to the neighborhood or to the P I O D. First of all, we are vastly, we're going to be improving the aesthetics of the property, which again, bring up the property, we bring up the neighborhood, make it more aesthetically pleasing. But most importantly, we're really looking to improve the functionality of this house and bring it into the modern era. And in doing so, I think what that does is it provides for sustainability for the house and is a benefit to the, you know, to the overall area. We'll be increasing tax revenue to the town. We are not going to impact anyone's views. We are not going to create any shadowing to anyone. In fact, I noticed that on at least one of our pictures, I think it was this one, it shows a midday shadow, and you can see our shadow is pretty much confined to our own lot. And even with the eight-foot increase, I don't see that shadow making it all the way over here, so. And again, as I explained earlier, we're going up a little higher, but we're not going to impact anyone's views of the water in any way, shape, form. We're not exacerbating, exacerbating, I can't quote that word, huh? Exacerbating any non-conformities or creating any new non-conformities. We're not touching that one existing non-conforming. We're not changing the footprint. So we're not increasing really the density or the intensity of the use on the lot. You know, there's a box there now, it's going to be the same box with just a little bit of height in the middle. The proposed alteration in the increase in the height is very consistent with the neighborhood. I think most of these houses, well, maybe not the one in the middle here, but from the road, they're certainly up in that 30-plus height category. The house across the way, well into that range, and even this house appears to me to be, you know, up into the 30 to 30-plus range. So clearly the houses down the road, they're really all about the same height. You can see that our house is slightly lower than these two. When we add our eight feet, we'll be, we'll be right with them. So we're not going to be the tallest structure by any means, certainly not with that across the street. We have, as I suggest to all my clients, go meet with your neighbors, okay? You may have noticed another thing that's happening here, is I've learned that we need to get to the clients and to the architects early so that we can talk with them about what the zoning allows, rather than, you know, having the dream house designed and then trying to figure out how we meet zoning or how we're going to get zoning. So we've been trying to really make sure that the projects we bring forth are, you know, meeting the requirements, not pushing the envelopes, and, you know, are within, certainly within, not substantially detrimental, we're trying. And we did a lot of work with this one to make sure. We met with the building inspector to talk about things and made sure everything was right. And again, we're not creating any non-conformities. And I really don't think this is going to have detrimental effect. We met with our neighbors, I've given you a little chart again. You can see that we have met with, when we send out our notice, we send it out to all the Butters. But a lot of the non-director Butters, you know, they're not, but we make sure that we meet with every director Butter. And as you can see, even some on either side. So in this case, we have, we've got approval from all the neighbors across the street. We've got approval from the neighbors on either side of us. And although it shows a bunch of lots back here, that's the beach, that's town-owned. So we don't have any, there's nobody behind us, so to speak. And we're very blessed to have very supportive neighbors and people who would like to see this happen. So again, let me give you a quick overview of what's proposed. And I, I think I'm just going to jump, if you don't mind. I'm happy to show the floor plans, but I really want to jump to the, to the picture so that you can see what we're proposing to do here. And that is, this is the view from the water side. And you can see we're two stories to the water side. This is the storage utility area upstairs. No windows, you know, we're going to have our A C in there and storage. In fact, I have a very interesting picture. I mean, the way the current house is configured, it's almost like the storage thing is a hidden ladder. It's almost like storing it at half, really strange configuration. But as you can see, I got a picture just to show you what it, what it is today. And it's a, you know, it's a pull-down, crazy pull-down, and there's the storage up above. We're just going to make it so that you can get a stairway up here and we, so that we can get up there to put you to the A C and utilities. But it's still going to be used for storage because as I said, the house has very few closets and very little storage area, so it will be an important part. But it's been designed so that it is a storage area. We have no windows facing the water at all. We have one little tiny window up here in the corner so that there is some, you know, light and air that could get up there if you needed to. But as you can see, we're really just kind of squaring the house off, raising the height just a little bit. The view from the water is just the same as it is today. It's a two-story with this walkout that's actually down below grade. You know, it's, you know, this, this lower level at the beach side is almost set in below grade. So, do you have some others? Yeah, here we go. Yeah, so you can see that the walkout here is below grade. And then this is sort of from the side, this is the water side. No, no, I'm sorry, I got it backwards. Front yard, that's what faces Northern Boulevard today. And this, this faces Northern Boulevard. This is the back, this is the back. So clearly two stories sort of walk out from the, from the basement. This deck is a grade, although as you move to the front, because they have slopes, you know, we get off the ground. So I, I think, I think John has done a nice job of kind of, you know, being able to manipulate the whole inside of the building without making, you know, without changing the footprint. Again, some modifications to this upper roof area resulting in an increase of eight feet, but at the end of the day, really very little, you know, physical change out there. Although aesthetic change is much nicer, you know, they're looking at a hottie boy, vertical siding, vertical siding, upgraded windows and, you know, just, just better materials for a house that sits on the water and, you know, it's a hundred years old. So it did need some improvement. But again, no new non-conformities, not changing the one existing non-conformity. We meet bar, we meet lot coverage, we meet all your other regulations. So really just an improvement and, you know, to bring this house into the modern age in terms of livability and functionality. We've met with neighbors and I guess at that point, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. Any questions, Mario?
No, I'm good.
The ground floor is just storage, is that correct?
Yeah.
So there's just the, like the front door.
Let me see if I can show you.
The plan doesn't have anything except, does it even show the door, the windows? But assuming you walk in and there's a, there's a ground floor space and then you walk upstairs?
When you come in that side door, Joey?
So yes, you can come in that door, but the, the main door that most people come up is to the right, is steps up to the side of the house.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that basement is rough. You know, so rather than going through that basement, you, people come up the side steps. Here. Then you're in your main living space. But yes, you can go through there.
Has it got a concrete floor or what?
Concrete.
Concrete. And is the idea of putting the mechanicals up somewhat adequate?
So do you mind, Mr. Chairman? So in talking to the builder, we can't use, we can't do ductwork. There's no air conditioning, I suppose, and they don't work great. But, so we can't do ductwork because the home is so old and tearing it apart and trying to add it really doesn't make any sense. So the idea is that that upper, that second floor, where we'll be 90% of the time, that will be air-conditioned with some new units, question? And that will be above. So basically it'd be easy to be able to just event it. The other level, the first level with the bedrooms, I'll use splitters because I can't, I can't get that air heating down there. So bringing it up from the basement doesn't, doesn't work.
Okay.
Excuse me, I'm losing my voice.
Thank you. Do you have any?
Do you have a question?
Sure.
It looks like this is in the velocity zone. Based on my map, and you said you've had discussions with the, with the building inspector about this?
Oh yes, in terms of substantial improvements.
Substantial.
Yeah, we had to provide him cost estimates, assessors' values and cost estimates for the construction, yes, and he felt that we were below the threshold.
So you don't need to go up on the patents?
No. You mean the 50% rule?
Yes, yeah, we're fine, yeah. And where is this with the conservation commission?
What was it?
Where is it? We haven't filed with the conservation commission?
Yeah, we will be filing again soon. We've got either Mike Seedcamp or Tom Hughes. They're going to be working with us on it. Didn't see anything that was going to be a real problem. There's no doom we're getting into.
We're not touching any, you know.
I mean, the house was appraised at a pretty, just the house at a pretty high price, so we've got a fair amount of money to work with to do primarily interior stuff. And, and yeah, the exterior costs money now, that's for sure. But, you know, where they are, that's wise money spent.
Okay, thank you.
And the third, the attic space is, it's within the envelope, it's conditioned space, you've got mechanical units and you're going to have storage up there.
Yeah, we have a low ceiling height.
Do you have six foot, is it six foot eight to the?
Six foot eight, yes. I, I'm John Salwa. My house is also an office on 90 Middle Road and in Newbury. And main office is in...
And main office is in, in the street in Newport. And yes, I talked to Peter quite a bit about that. And he essentially said it wasn't a third story. Said mechanical, we're going to probably have heat pump up there. I would assume with duck work coming down, it might be different than what?
I mean, and the windows, that is an existing window, so that doesn't even change. So it's just for air.
But you are adding height to that room for, for equipment or for people to walk around in storage?
Well, right now, there's a fifty, what, four-inch height?
Yeah, it's four, it's four feet. And it's under five, so climbing up there now, you cannot stand.
I mean, there's.
So it's not real, it's not real convenient to doing what we needed to do.
Understand, but if it has a stair that you can walk up, it has a window and it has walls and it has a six-foot-eight height room, what's to make it not be another bedroom?
We're not adding bedrooms because we're putting a master bedroom down on the first level.
I understand your intent. I'm just saying the physical qualities of that space, we're building inspector.
And it's not going to be heated and there's no discussion of putting a room up there?
Well, code-wise, it's, it's under seven feet. According to Mass Code, anything under seven feet is not happening in this space. And that's what Peter had made his decision on. Plus, it's now the mechanical equipment and the thing up there. And it's just a, you know, pulling down those disappearing stairs is scary. I mean, with the springs and everything going ahead, you know, just.
I understand. I'm trying to get the technical definition of the size, the shape, the access, knowing what it has and understand, understand that. So I do have two questions about the plans. I think the plans need to be listed with the rooms, so the bedrooms, I mean, the bedrooms and the bathrooms are all listed on the plan?
Yeah.
There needs to be a couple of updates because not all the bathrooms. You say three bedrooms, there are bathrooms. It's clear that two, it looks like there's still a one bath, because I don't see where the.
The, there's another bathroom that is going to be going.
Right, no, I totally understand. But I had to list them. What I'm saying is that the plans need to be updated with the titles. And if the bathroom, it should show a toilet and a sink, a vanity in it.
The proposed first floor, okay, you have that?
Yeah, there's one bathroom in that.
There's one, there's actually two bathrooms. See, there's a new bathroom for the master bedroom, which is where the, which is where the old living room will be, is right now. And then there's existing bathroom, soon as you come in the door, right in this.
I totally, totally get it. I have it listed on my plan. But what I'm saying, if someone else looks at the plan and wants to go over it, they need to see it. So I think you need to draw in the entity and the toilets so that anybody else wants to double-check, there's no issue on what's on the plan.
Okay, sure. We can do that. Right, the thing is, it's, it's the existing floor, first floor bathroom, which is shown directly above it.
I know, but you're proposing a first floor plan, so just please show everything that's proposed. And you know it.
I see what you're saying. We'll just add them in.
Yeah, I mean, I can just duplicate that and put it's exactly the same bathroom.
Just want to make sure someone's double-checking the plans that we're all on the same page of what we're improving as opposed to rooms that don't have title on them.
Okay, and we'll put bedroom one, bedroom two, bedroom.
And the second floor has another bathroom next to the kitchen that should be labeled as well. And I do have a question on the site plan in that the site plan setback dimensions are to the structure, but they're not to the deck or the stairs.
You have those?
Yep. Take any one of them. It's thirteen point seventeen to the corner of the structure, the house itself, but it's not to the built deck. So how do we know what, what it should be to the man-made structure?
Yeah, it's an eight, it's an eight foot, yeah, all the way.
Understood, but the site plan, the dimensions shown on the site plan do not represent setbacks to the physical built structure.
Well, yeah, I can't help you with that one.
All right, I wasn't asking you.
But we can have that put on quite easily.
Yes.
That's right here. Yeah, that's where you want, that one there, which is the closest one.
All four need to be.
All the way back, it's pretty, pretty clear. Yeah, see, he's got it, he's got it from four.
Five point seven become under ten?
All the way to there, which is eighty-three point eight. The chairman wants it to the edge of.
Right, but I think the question is, do we, does that then put us below ten feet?
Yeah.
Is the, there's no existing deck on that side?
There's an existing deck there right now.
And is the existing deck remaining?
Is it what?
Is it remaining?
Yes, it's not moving. Yeah, we're not touching. There we go.
So it. Right, okay, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, that just changed the mansion.
Right, so the site plan, side yard dimensions, all four of them need to be updated. And then the application needs to be updated to reflect those exact numbers.
It's not like Mr. Dixon to.
I was, but you're very consistent, so.
Please retire, huh? Please, I'm glad.
All right, Michelle, any other comments, questions? Mario?
I'm good.
All right, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the project? You may speak in favor of your own project.
Oh, why? I'm there.
Is there anything in the audience that would like to speak against the project? Nobody? Okay, so with that, I think we had some discussion about the site plan and updating the drawings for titles.
Yeah, update handle titles, twirling vanities, set, setting. Now, both of the bathrooms and bathrooms showing toes and vanity. And side yard dimensions need to be on plan and the matrix updated.
Correct. And this has not gone before COMCOM, just to be clear. So with that, is there a motion to be had?
I'll make a motion to grant a draft as a special permit as proposed to redesign of the interior house with increase of height from twenty point five to twenty eight point four, with the main front setback being non-conforming and an increase in bar from eighteen to twenty-three point eight, with conditions to update the plans with titles, drawing, toilet, vanity, and site plan dimensions included with setbacks that need to be updated and matrix need to be updated also.
Yes, I would say application.
Application. I mean, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm unconscious to ask if I could ask a question. And that is, I'm assuming that the, that the, the conditions of the plan changes and things will allow you to be satisfied that we, you know, we're not detrimental and that we're meeting your bylaws. That said, is it possible that you could vote? And so that we know that we have the permit, conditioned on us providing you these revised plans? He's just running into trouble with, you know, scheduling, contracting, winter coming.
How long does it take? What about the conservation commission, is that going to take a while, though, right?
Oh, they're preparing it now and it'll be one meeting.
You hope.
Well, yeah, well, I mind the fact that we're not touching anything. We hope, but I, with all due respect, I wanted to ask.
Yeah, I, just like the last one, I mean, we'd like to get this all in. I understand, I don't, we are not continuing this. With the motion that's currently on the table that hasn't been seconded or voted at the moment, with your question, we're not just looking to continue this because we've got questions and suspects. We are making a motion, favorable motion in which to draft, we're making a motion in which to draft a favorable motion.
I understand, I appreciate that, I understand.
So, and just like the other one, that's, that's what we're looking at for standards, to have things be correct in the language. Other, other, other less presented and less documented applications are discontinued and there's no, there's no real question.
Is it because of the site plan was incorrect? I understand about not putting bathrooms, not noting bathrooms in bedroom one, two, or three, but is it because of the site plan? Again, it's my, it's my question, if you don't mind me asking.
Good point. I'm considering here for a moment, thinking. So is there a second on the motion?
One second.
Okay, I would, I would then make an alternate motion because of what is presented here that we could vote to approve an application with conditions. And as long as the conditions are submitted, we could review separately and sign off if individually we each feel everything has been presented.
We greatly appreciate that.
That said, the one condition that must be met is still the COMCOM commission must be favorable.
I understand.
Which is not our purview, but certainly could have ramifications to what is presented. And so as part of the motion, if there are any changes to the site plan other than dimensional numbers, other than the updates we asked for from COMCOM, then you need to come back to us.
Fair, fair.
Okay, so we're looking for a set of plans and a site plan to be re-presented at your speed to us. Chrissy will do her best to draft up as she usually does and get it disseminated to us so that we can show it inside.
Thank you, that's great, we appreciate that.
It won't be a full month, but it could be a couple of weeks or on your, your behalf, on our behalf.
Thank you very much.
All right, so there's a second motion to alter the first motion. Is there a second on that?
Second.
All right, so voting on the second motion has the motion, are we, is there a vote?
Yes.
Yes, three yeses, so.
Well, thank you. We're going to get you those plans by next week, so we will hold you out.
I'll start drafting.
In fact, we've asked John to go do them right now.
He's still.
It's just a state, it typically happens because we're only three and we can't get together and have a party with two of us and discuss things. Chrissy drafts, she sends it out. We individually review for edits and text, send it back to her. When we have individually all agreed on the text, then she sends it out and we're, we then come in and sign it.
Yeah, no, I understand that we.
We need to see your plans before that.
Right, you will, just turn to our.
Making sure we understand what we're.
No, I do and I appreciate what you've got us doing.
So thank you and.
Well, thank you.
Do appreciate three nicely presented.
We're trying.
Keep it up.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, vote to close the public hearing?
Yes, so vote to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Does anybody need to motion?
I'm making a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, second. All in favor?
Aye. I do want to say, we were talking earlier in the meeting, I'm hoping we won't have to bring boards anymore. We're going to start providing electronic and we're going to be able to.
Zoom it.
To show it on there, so.
Yeah, we have to show it on.
Yeah, so we can start with these handouts and the boards.
The fifteen trees that we chose to sit for now.
Although I could still like the electronic PDF copy of the presentation.
Oh, of course, we always will, but I just mean, we won't have to photocopy. And it'll be up there, it'd be easier to click through it too. That's great, just follow it.
When it's just here at six-thirty, you know, you can't.
Oh, no, we'll, we'll actually send them, oh, yeah, yeah. But we'll send them to you early.
So when, when things are being presented and someone's proposing, is it, will there be easy sharing of the monitor? Like if I bring my laptop and have markups and something digital or something I want to explain and you're presenting, can I usually flip to me and present? How's that work?
Well, it has to be plugged into this with an H D M I cable.
That's the IT department, everyone.
Yeah.
That's great news.
We'll work on it offline. We'll work on it offline.
You can share, you can share. You can go back and forth and share. We see if you can push that up.
Oh, we can do that. Yes, they'll show me this way. She does that, well, she has Zoom meetings with COMCOM. Like she came up and she showed me how to do it and I can just put.
Oh, just in here?
It's a way to go because she can Zoom.
Well, they prefer.
Other conferences.
I tried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have little puck systems where you plug into your computer and you can quickly flick between people in the room. We need to get that sophisticated.
Motion to close to me?
Motion to close to me.
You have a piece of.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.